Okay, I call the meeting to order at six oh five and we're going to go into a brief executive session. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, second.
Kelly.
Okay, and it is. Six oh five.
Michael.
You can vote, everybody left, so, okay. Okay, so, everybody voted in favor of going into executive session at six oh five?
Yes.
All right. The board voted to come out of executive session at six eleven via. Okay, we can, we can move.
Okay, approval of March fifteen, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting minutes, can I have a motion?
One motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, second.
Period for expression, public. Your. Okay, report from my friends at the library.
The Friends of the Library are meeting here tomorrow at eleven AM in person and hybrid. They have a fundraiser, I should have made you a flyer, but I will send you the information at Barron's Coke, they're going to have Stacy German speak, she wrote the Hampton's cookbook. They're gonna have some nice reserves. I think everybody gets a hot tail and it should be a beautiful afternoon with, among friends.
And it's May twentieth or May twenty first.
Twenty first.
And it's a hundred dollars if you purchase your ticket.
It is, and you grabbed that flyer off a, somebody very talented with that flyer.
No, I grabbed a bunch of work into the board meeting and giving them that and tennis for everybody I see.
So, here it is, and ask your unit at Barron's Coke, May twenty first. You have your cell phones, you can pull them out and scan the QR code and buy your tickets now.
We did that. Make sure.
He did.
All right.
That's why I said somebody very talented did it, and humble, very humble lady.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, I think that's all.
Yeah. Elliot, Treasury Report, okay. All right, folks, of course, this is the end of our first quarter for the year. The balance of current cash and invested funds was a little over six million, six million sixty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-one. It was about three hundred thousand dollars higher than it was a year ago at this time. Or as you know, at the end of the meeting, we're gonna prove a purchase of three hundred thousand dollars of furniture, so, you know, easy come, easy go. I mean, it's, it's good that, obviously, that, that things are in a strong position, so we can afford to do these things. The mortgage balance is now down to five million, two hundred and thirty-four, two, 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 ninety-three. And this is down a little more than six hundred thousand dollars from last year at this time. And a nice thing about the mortgage is next year, it'll be down another six hundred and some thousand dollars, so that's all positive. Turning to revenue and expenses for this, just the month of March. Revenue was four hundred and eleven, one ninety-one, expenses were three oh nine, seven, seven, nine, net of about a hundred thousand dollars. Last year was, the, the important thing, I think, to notice about the difference between the two years was that we spent a lot more this year in the month of March than we did last year, but we still ended up with a better net. A lot of that has to do, of course, with the way the, the tax money comes in, but I do think it's, it's good, it's a good thing that the, that we were able to, you know, to spend more and still come out ahead. The, there were two, I just, I'm mentioning this now because this is our quarterly report and, and we could say this at any given time, but I'm focusing on three areas, personnel, financial, and buildings and grounds, because these are our three biggest budget areas, that's where we spend most of our money. So, in March, we spent hundred forty-seven thousand, one forty-six on personnel, we spent seventy-five thousand and change on financial expenses, which is, of course, on the mortgage. And then buildings and grounds expenses were sixty-nine thousand, six sixty-eight, and I think anybody would notice that that is way out of line with our normal buildings and grounds expenses in one month, we'll look at that in a little more detail later. I should mention two variances now, which I don't necessarily do on a monthly basis, but the personnel costs for this month were significantly higher than they usually are because of the scheduling of, was it TIAA, what is it called?
Our TIAA Craft Retirement.
Yes, yes.
So, do you want to tell them, or?
You can tell.
Okay, um, so what TIAA did is normally you have two payrolls in a month, except for phantom payroll, and two retirement polls in a month to match up with each paycheck. Um, TIAA pulled our retirement a little bit earlier than we had anticipated, so we actually have three retirement polls for two paychecks. And then next month, what you'll see in the financials is two payrolls, but only one retirement poll. Um, because our payrolls are not, like, we don't pay on, like, the fifteenth and the thirtieth, um, it's, it's rolling pay periods, so sometimes our pay periods span a month.
So it's every other Friday?
Yeah.
Situation, and so sometimes you have three Fridays. And, and what happens with retirement is that legally you have to pull it within seven days of a payroll going out, so usually businesses admit their penalties after that. And usually businesses will pull before the payroll goes out to make sure that it's there, and so if they pull on Tuesday, you could have a month where there are only two Fridays, but two pay periods that get a Friday, but there are three Tuesdays that hit within that month, I've had the same issue. Also, one other thing is this month, are you now fully staffed, or are we still missing someone?
We are still missing.
Okay, because you're, but you're closer to fully staffed.
We're closer to fully staffed.
So payroll will be up, whenever we get close to fully staffed, payroll will significantly.
Yeah, but we do have some payroll savings in that we have a lot of new staff, and so new staff do not get retirement benefits until six months, so we, we have some savings there.
And you've got something to return.
And we do, we actually, on the turn, we leave, who we saw earlier today.
Did she bring, did she bring the baby?
She did bring the baby.
She didn't bring the baby, she would not have been allowed.
That's very true. Okay, let's see, where were we? Okay, so the personnel, that's, you know, it, it's a big number, it's like thirteen thousand something, normally it would be around five or six, I think. Buildings and grounds was the big outlier, like I said, it's sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight we spent during the one month. This is unanticipated, the HVAC remediation cost, I mean, not totally unanticipated, but it's gonna get worse. Yes, it's only gonna get worse, yeah, yeah, we spent forty-six thousand, seven twenty-three in March on just on that issue, HVAC remediation. And that's something that was dramatically different, you know, a year ago, we only spent, I guess, in more typical March, we would spend only thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars. So, you know, this is an issue, we'll talk about that a little bit more, when we look at the year-to-date actuals, we'll get an idea of like how serious that problem is yet at this point. Okay, so everything else, as far as expenses, were within their usual parameters for the month. So now turning to the revenue and expenses in relation to the annual budget. Of course, we should be roughly at twenty-five percent both on the expense and the income side. Because of the way the tax payments work, we were way ahead of that, I mean, we are at fifty-eight percent of the annual budget on revenue, so almost two million dollars, and we were even higher last year, so it's not, it just has to do with this flow of the money. So, we're at fifty-eight percent of our, of our budget as far as, as revenue. In terms of, I thought we should look at variances anyway, in terms of how things compared, you know, to a previous year or whatever, because there are a couple of things that, that are notable. In terms of non-tax sources, the SCLS income is largely in already, seventy-eight percent, seventy-eight, three point nine of the budget. Library-generated income is tracking at above twenty-five percent, twenty-seven percent. Contributions are lagging a little bit, they're twenty percent of the budget, but again, you know, I, and, and as a group, we need to see how all these things work from year to year as far as what month contributions coming. But financial income, I wanted to make a particular point of now because it's, to date, it's ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars for the year, financial income. That is far beyond last year where the income for the, for the first quarter was just two hundred and forty-six dollars. Now, this is all the T-bills, so thanks to Bill and everybody else that was involved in the T-bills, you know, you get a sense of how important this is going to be in terms of our overall finances. On the other hand, it's, we're still only at fifteen point two percent of the budget, we're gonna have to learn how the money flows in. You know, we've got unrealized gains, we've got interest coming in, but it's gonna come in different moments.
T-bill spawns off interest.
Yeah.
As it goes, and then there's a coupon at the end.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have one one in June, maturing, one in September, one in December.
Yeah.
So the coupons will.
Yeah.
Pump that up.
Yeah, but anyway, I think it's, it's just an important thing to keep an eye on now, over the course of the year, because a year ago, we didn't have those, I mean, we had all of our money was invested just in the, in the, it wasn't invested, it was in savings account and checking account, money markets and so forth. Okay, now on the expense side, we spent almost seven hundred thousand dollars, six ninety-seven, five ninety-three in the first quarter, and that is only twenty-nine, twenty point nine percent of the budget, so that's, that's good. And it compares favorably to last year's. Personnel, which is, of course, our biggest area of spending money, we're only at nineteen percent of the budget. And that is a fairly, tends to be fairly regular, we are one person down, and a couple of adjustments to make, so, and this is good, it's a good number. Financial is, of course, it's essentially a fixed expense, so it doesn't matter, but it's twenty-seven percent of our budget. We're running at sixteen point six percent, so I guess we're gonna come out ahead in that area presumably. Now, buildings and grounds is only about ten percent of what we spend, but in, in a typical year, but we've already used up thirty-four percent of the target for this area, which is, which is what, you know, the bigger issue that we're talking about before. That even if you look at the full quarter, when you look at the full quarter, we're, we're at thirty-five, thirty-four point four percent, and we're just now beginning to see these additional expenses going on for B and G. There's a bunch more, you know, I think, in the warrants, I believe.
Yes, so something that was, I believe, in the second warrant, if not in this pile I just gave you, is the split unit that cools the IT room died in December, November, December of last year, and we finally got it replaced.
That's true.
Um, which is, you know, like, it's a twelve thousand dollar project from, from start to finish, so things like that have, have popped up. Which, which create an expense, you know?
Yeah. Yep. So, anyway, we're gonna, I guess, we'll be looking at this every month and we'll just see how it shapes up. I mean, it seems certain that we're gonna go over budget this year in this area, but it could be offset by savings in other areas, the way certain things are going, so that's good.
But there, also, we've run under budget the entire time I've been on board. And so a year where we run over budget, but we fix the HVAC.
Oh, yeah.
And we upgrade the floors and the stacks.
Yeah.
Is, I mean, looking beyond the quarter, beyond the year, if you look at, in a five-year track.
Yeah.
It's, and the money is, we, we've saved the money ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you, if you, you looked around the building, you'll see that we've had the brickwork replaced, which is part of that HVAC remediation, because we had to pull it out of the HVAC. But the other half of that project is fixing the crumbling mortar in the plaza. So they're working on that now, which is about thirteen thousand dollars, so I'm, I'm funding your money, but it's, it's on things that need to, to be done.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree entirely. As you see, there are, there are two, there are two warrants this month, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just in those. Warrants have unpaid to this point, charges, so, you know, we're spending a lot of money, but as, as Van mentioned, so it's true, we're, we're in a solid enough position that we can afford to to weather these kinds of situations. The payrolls are attached. They're, they're normal in scale and I've gone over the details of those, so look for your approvals on both the warrants and the payrolls. Are there any questions, anything?
I just had a question on canopy. It was a three thousand, but what, how does that work and how are we doing on that? It's into the SCLA.
So, S, canopy is digital films, and the way the canopy works is you send them a, a check and they debit from that account, and then, once they run out of money, they send you a, a letter saying no more canopy for you until you give us more money, um, so.
They give you a warning first?
They do, but the warning went to an email that none of us got, so it was actually a patron who was like, and why can't I watch my canopy films anymore, and we were like, that is an excellent question, let us find out. So, we got that back up and running, and was three thousand like the minimum, or maybe it wasn't, it might have been what they suggested, I think that was the suggestion. And the last time we had put in for canopy was two years ago?
I think so, it was when we first started.
So, it's.
We were worried that might kind of go out of control at the time.
Yeah, and so I would say the use has not gotten out of control, but the use is definitely up, I think, people are, have discovered it and are using it.
Okay.
And it's great if you don't use canopy at all.
Yeah.
There's a lot of really interesting stuff on there.
It's the thoughtful Netflix.
It is the thoughtful Netflix.
Any other questions?
Great recording, the presentation.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, can we have a motion to approve the treasurer's report of the financial statements, the check warrants, and the payroll warrants? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. On to Kelly for the director's report.
So, things are humming along, um, we've, we've been doing spring cleaning, gearing up for summer, lots of running around. Liz, who you all met earlier, has completed her first month as teen librarian, she's had ground running, met with the school vice principal and the librarian, she attended a PTA meeting. Emily and Ginta were featured in the Sag Harbor Express performing a storytime at the school, and Anthony is continuing to grow the library of things, deploying items that have become popular, especially our Roku sticks, which do have canopy on them, I believe, as well as our portable projector. We also have a little Nintendo all-in-one gaming unit that, if it's not already on the shelf, is, is getting ready to go out on the shelf. And the telescope that has been sitting behind the reference desk for, oh, like, two years is finally ready and available to circulate, it's in a very lovely piece of luggage, so, you know, if you are a stargazer or hope to be, one day, you can check out the library telescope. And it's on wheels, so easy in and out, I'll even put it in the trunk of your car.
That's worth the money just for.
Just watch that.
Patrons make suggestions or recommend.
Yes, we actually have, in our most recent email that's going out, went out, we actually have a little QR code and link to a quiz for people to suggest what to have, but you can suggest something now if you'd like.
No, it's just. How you got.
Pizza stone. A pizza stone.
I'd rather have a pizza chef than a pizza stone.
You know, where do you people, this stuff, the storage, that'd be an issue when you start growing this.
Yes, um, a lot of the stuff, the only thing that's really like huge is the telescope, everything else is pretty, pretty small. And so if you go up into the room with which we keep our periodicals, you'll the next, they're in little DVD cases, and then the stuff is stored behind the main floor service point or reference desk, and we check it out from there. So, one of the things that we are getting as part of this refurb of the lower level is more storage on the lower level, so we may at some point move to store some of the bigger items downstairs.
And is any of it available for interlibrary loan?
Well, that's. It's just our.
Oh, okay.
I can't remember where I heard about it, and if it was the previous meeting here, I apologize, but somewhere I heard a wonderful story about a library that was loaning tools.
Yeah, and, and also garden equipment, it's.
Yeah, um, I know that, something that's very popular at the Southwood Library is that they lent fishing poles, not hooks, just poles, and your own hook, and your own worms, and then, and I, that's exactly how much I know about fishing. And then, something that was popular, although I think it drove the staff, the staff a little crazy, in Bridgehampton, is we circulated beach chairs, which were fun, because, you know, when a guest comes and you don't have a beach chair.
Or if you, if you're doing Airbnb and you want to go to beach.
Yeah.
How did that work out, how many chairs did you have?
We, I think, did we have eight, six, eight, I don't remember, it was so long ago. We did not do umbrellas, but we did talk, it was sort of a storage-based issue, they were not, but they were great, they were like little backpacks, they were, you know, the ones that sit low in the sand, and you can wear them on your back, and they had a pouch, so you can put your library book in up, and you know, the library's logo, really big on the back, so anybody knows where you got your chair from. There was an article in the New York Times about it, it was the Times of the Wally.
It's kind of random with an option to buy.
Yeah.
Not returning it, then you're buying it.
So, let's see, what else? We're taking credit card payments for faxes, Ellie, oh no, wait, this is the most important part, we now finally have full-time IT in the library. And Ellie has been fabulous, she, as I had mentioned, the startup she worked for is winding down a little bit, and so I had the opportunity to bring her on full-time, and I did, and she is just doing all of the things that I have been asking Danny to do that he hasn't been able to get to because he's only here four hours a week, so she's cleaning up a lot of things, getting a lot of stuff done, it makes me very, very happy, and one of the things that we have done is rolled out credit card payments on the lower level. I had purchased a square reader for when we were doing Harbor Fest in hopes that it would, you know, we could sell swag, and then we ended up rattling all the swag off on the raffle wheel, because we were, we were underprepared for how popular the raffle wheel was gonna be, but, um, so we've been, we, we have that down at this lower level desk. And it's for faxes, we also sell tickets to the Long Island Aquarium, discounted tickets, it's a pass-through, so we buy them at cost through the library system and then sell them at cost, and then also the Long Island Science Museum, which is also in Riverhead, so we've seen an increase in people purchasing those things because they can now.
It's a science museum.
The Long Island Science Museum?
Where is it?
It's actually in Tanger right now, it's in Tanger one because they're renovating.
Yeah. It was on Main Street.
But it was on Main Street.
How many tickets do you sell a month?
Not a ton, I would say, this month, we, we sold a couple of aquarium tickets, and then I saw another big purchase come through, which was for tickets, and I don't remember, yes.
Any thought of using alternative sources of payment?
Venmo, Venmo is a little hard, because Venmo, you have to attach to a person.
Yeah, you can do it through business now, but I look to do it, it is not, it is not easy.
We have the same issue work.
We actually did end up trying to do Venmo, and we couldn't attach it to me because I already had a business Venmo attached to me, so then we, I think, attached it to Rachel as the programming librarian, and now Rachel is no longer with us, but once you attach a business to a person, you can attach that business to someone else. It's like a whole.
And Venmo is really not designed for business.
Venmo is not designed for business.
Zelle is better.
I hear Zelle is good, I hear Cash App is.
Something that doesn't have the service fees and charges.
Yeah, Zelle doesn't have the service fees, are you gonna sell swag at the lower level?
Um, we, if we have swag to sell, we probably will do some sort of swag.
I mean, I think that.
At some point, that's the other goal, Liz.
Yeah, I definitely know some.
Some people who would.
Relatives. I'm not willing to buy, buy for them, but they can.
Um, so we can definitely.
It's a nonprofit.
Put our, our heads together about, about some swag.
Yeah, it's a nonprofit, you go to tote bags.
Tote bags.
Nobody needs them.
Nobody needs them.
I didn't say they needed, but that's just what you do.
Although, it's, it was like a really good, like, that's the thing, like, a really, like a beach, boat bag, like, boat bag, right?
Yeah.
But those become so expensive that people don't want to buy them, right, because they're like.
Beach towels.
You could do beach towels, that might be fun.
Yeah. You had, I mean, you've done the basic, baseball.
Bikini. Get a bikini and a book.
Umbrellas. Bikinis and books.
Oh, no.
I don't, I don't know if that's the, uh, the.
That's where the logo. Bring my books back and forth.
Uh-huh.
I mean, I would, I would love to have a library.
A library bag?
Because, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's either skeeble or whatever I've got. You know, you, they're heavy, and they're awkward to carry.
No, I, I mean, I use.
People do, like.
You do it electronically.
The Friends did one a long, one a long time ago.
Three years ago.
Three years ago, and we just, do we still have them, or did we finally get rid of the last one?
Yeah, they sold them all at a, at a.
Harbor Fest, right?
Yeah.
So, I think they, the Friends did a deal where he bought their cookbook and the, the back, the other, he got a discount, and that got rid of the rest of them. So we can definitely, we can definitely look at a tote bag too.
Umbrella.
And then.
Not the little ones.
A little umbrella or a big?
It's a rain umbrella.
Rain umbrella or a beach?
Rain umbrella. No, I meant rain umbrella.
Beach umbrella.
I hate umbrellas, but, and I won't use them, but.
All right, so send me your swag ideas, and we will, we will do a Costa.
They have those companies that just cater towards.
Yeah.
Rent a trustee.
They send me a box of free stuff every month, this was this month's free thing.
Make donations to the library and Michael Gariboutin will mow your lawn.
I'll do it.
Um, so, yeah, so we, we had Ellie, we're taking credit card payments, the Mason rework began, which is very exciting. We were a bus stop during the Village Street Rehaving, which let me tell you, if you've ever seen a bus do a three-point turn in front of a library, like, in front of the library, I, I was nervous. And it's not just because I was the car trying to make the left off of Union as the bus was making the three-point turn, but they did it, and we all.
Against the bus can't go down garden.
They, no, I, and that's what I thought, I was like, well, why don't they just go down garden, I was like, yeah, that's probably. So let's say Buildings and Grounds met and picked out all sorts of fixtures and colors and wonderful things, which we'll talk about later. I got a follow-up with Steve from Commercial and Flooring, because he was hoping to get out here end of this week, maybe next week, to, with his foreman, just to, again, give his foreman the lay of the land and double-check that the floors are going where we say they're, um, and then what else?
Library open.
Cleaned your carpets.
Oh, yeah, we cleaned the carpets, but we did not clean the lower level because we're replacing it, and I, this is probably terrible, but I didn't Want them to do, Kendra always does a really great job and I didn't want them to make the floors look beautiful, um. Right before we, we had them pulled up, so um. That's on video for everyone to hear, but uh, there's no saving these. Especially right there. So that is that. I went to about a gazillion meetings. Um, but it's, it's good to go to meetings because. After going to one of those meetings, I saw these really great end panels at the Lyndon Hurst Memorial Library. Um, for book displays and I ended up having them added into the, the scope of work for. Um, displaying box, which. We were going to lose by virtue of um, pulling out the stacks that we have, which have swat walls, so. Meetings are good. Uh, statistics, we have been busy, so you can see like our patron numbers are up. Um, I think some of that is, we're just, we're cooking with gas. We're doing a lot of great things here. Um, and people are definitely sort of past that pandemic thinking, you know.
It's spring, people come out more in spring.
Um, we have a ton of new library card holders. A lot of them are um. Children's cards, um, and teen cards, which um, I believe Quinta was working with Jamie over at the school to get card, library cards into student hands. Um, everything else, I don't think that there's really any outliers anywhere else in terms of stats that I. Thought I saw.
But what about website?
So I think, um, her website's just, everybody's watching the board meetings now that we post them. No, I, I think a lot of that is. Just, we, we've got a lot going on, so it's pushing traffic to the page. We've also, it's the default page where it was. Um, sometimes we'll change that on the computers, so we get that hit when it, when it pops up. Yeah, so TikTok's fun. Um, I have done two TikTok videos with her. She has not posted them. I'm trying not to take it personally. Not TikTok cool, uh, but um, she is hilarious. Her TikToks are good, um, so we're, we're getting some. Some screen time there.
Only our second month.
It's only our second month on it, yeah.
You wanna be a library influencer?
I pretty am a library influencer, um. Uh, so yeah, so, so we're doing, we're doing good.
And data transfers up, but that's because your patrons are up.
You know, we actually, that, that is a huge outlier, like our data transfer being that high. Is crazy. I actually did ask um, Ellie to, to look into that. We looked into it. We didn't see anything that was out of the ordinary. Um, in terms of huge uses on any sort of days or um, any one particular user who was using. We were a bust down, except that was in April, right?
Yeah, you're right.
So we're just, we're gonna, we're gonna keep an eye on it. Um, you know, I keep things, like, the first thing I said to her is like, alright, who's mining cryptocurrency? At the library. Downloading state secrets, but uh, it is neither of those things, um, as far as. Um, but that, that is huge, that.
Yeah, no, that was, well, if you look two, two years ago, heavy pandemic last year coming out of it. And you need people in the building to get those numbers up.
And then you will see in the personnel report that Ellie has had a staff title change and a rate of pay change.
Okay, so approval of the personnel report, motion, I'll make a motion, second. All in favor? Okay, committee reports, uh, personnel and.
Uh, we did not meet.
Finance, budget, contracts and legal. We are going to meet. We did not meet, but we are definitely going to meet soon, so we should talk about a date. Before we leave tonight. And that's a small one. Guess, I guess you had a meeting, right Dan?
Listen, let me tell you something. If you ever wanna send a meeting where people discuss different shades of blue, let me tell you, buildings and grounds is the place to be. Do we want, do we want chicory? Do we want robin's egg? Um, so.
Not want robin's egg.
So we just got, we, we picked out colors for the different furniture that we're going to be getting down here in the, in the lower level. Um, and went through with Brad and Nancy and just finalized everything. Um, and then we have a proposal here for moving the books and disposing of the shelving. That they, they gave us.
I just gave that to you today. We were gonna discuss that under old business.
So we're going to discuss that under old business. Um, but it seems to be that the, the flooring guys, as Kelly said, is gonna come take measurements and hopefully will be on track. Uh, late summer, early September.
The goal is last week of August, first week in September. That is, that is our goal. If we cannot hit that goal, then we have to wait until after the.
So that, that's where buildings and grounds is. And again, if you are interested in colors, come talk to me next year. Oh yeah, oh nice.
For two hours, three hours.
This was my choice for things. So that was the general thing, but I tried.
This is sort of the.
Well, that's for the children. And then teen is a different color.
Teen is. Black now, um, teen is, and this is like sort of the color of the table that will go with those chairs.
This is where we're gonna be, well, bring Kelly's room in, by the way, when she's out of vacation next.
And then there's the, like, really even teen is sort of these sort of colors, these greens and yellows and. So the teen desk is going to be. A circ desk is going to be.
It's a whole.
Or the service point desk are going to be a combination.
So that's where buildings and grounds is.
Okay, um, policy and long-range planning. We had a meeting on the twenty ninth. Um, and we'll discuss on the new business amendments to the New York State A. In leave policy and the full-time employee holidays, fine policy. Uh, we also discussed uh, notary and passports. Um, kinda just getting uh, the groundwork on those. Um, and Kelly thinks maybe in the fall we can get those two going.
Yeah, once we get through the uh, renovation project, we can look to have staff, um. Train for passports and then have that be something that we push out in, in the new year, because it is a process to get. Set up as a passport acceptance facility and then also to have staff trained.
Where are we on the um, board retreat meeting?
Uh, we did talk about it and we were just gonna do it, right? I could, I can walk you guys through a long range plan, um. I've done it before, I can do it again, um.
No, it's, it's fine. We just need.
We need to pick a day. We need, so let's think about when we want to.
I will offer, if it's between May and October, I will offer um, our porch at my house. So I could also offer our dining equipment if you have to have it, not on the porch. If we want it off-site.
I will look at a couple of, I'll throw out some dates. Do we wanna do it, we wanna do it on a weekend? Do we wanna do it during the week? Do we? I don't know what works for everyone.
Fine, it is Mondays, evenings and weekends. That's it.
Monday, Monday night?
If you can make it earlier, then.
It should be long, it should be. Yeah.
At least.
Yeah. Saturday morning or a Sunday morning? Or Sunday afternoon?
I can do that.
Realistically, it's, it's a, it's a big affair.
No, it should be.
Should be morning and afternoon, like a break for lunch or something. Because there's a lot to come. So I mean, if we're gonna do this, then let's do it. If we're not, if you're just gonna call it in, then you know, it's not even bother.
Well, I think we have to legally, so we have to.
I know, so let's, 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 let's do it then.
You all did legally complete your training for the year. Um, so you, you have fulfilled that. I did, but that, um, so um, we can do. Saturday doesn't work for you because you're off Sunday, Monday. So, I will.
You could have a retreat without.
No, that's kind of.
Um, so we can do.
Let me ask you this, could we do, we did, had to be a Saturday, can we start like? Noonish, twelve-thirty-ish?
Yeah. But it, yeah, I, I mean, Sunday is fine with me. I have no problem.
Man, I don't mind doing it on Sunday either. Just have to talk to the boss, but.
I'll throw out some dates and some times and we're gonna talk long range plan, right?
You do, wanna do it next month or what's the time?
Next month is, I can't do those weekends. The next month, because I've already booked.
Because it's almost May.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be May.
Well, we can't, I can't do it this weekend.
Alright, now it's nice.
We could do it two nights too.
Could you do it in break?
We could, we could.
It's getting everybody together on a weekend.
How about this? How about I? Throw together some options. And send out a poll and we'll see what works for everyone. So I will, I will. See when Anne's porch is available, um, but we might need IT.
There, there are actually only two, but we have good internet. There are only two weekends in May that I.
Why don't we just do it here?
We can just.
We could do it here too. Yeah, no, that's fine. You won't have the water view and you will also have to shut the doors.
Yes.
So, but they, we proved today that you can shut them.
You can shut them. I mean, like, here's the thing, we could, I'm, getting into summer makes it hard. Um, but it's something that we could. Potentially do off-site. At, you know, like, uh.
We have all the resources.
We do have all the resources here, but.
I'm trying to figure out what IT that we need.
Well, I mean. I'll buy you a nice lawn.
Is there a app that you can send out that, you know, list a bunch of days and then.
Doodle.
Doodle's good.
So we'll do a, we'll do a doodle. What I think I will do first is I'll send a quick, um. I'll send a quick survey monkey poll, um, just to see what the preferences are in terms of. Day, whether it's, it's, we do this all in one shot or we do it over two nights or, and once we get that down, then I'll send out a doodle with dates.
How many hours? Four hours?
I mean.
It kinda depends on.
It depends on where we, where we go. I mean, we're talking about our long-range plan, right? So you're talking about mission purpose, purpose and scope, so you know, you start. Looking at what the library has, has now in terms of, you know, what is our mission? Do we still feel that's our mission? You know, what is? And then you build upon it, um, to a point where, um, you know, I have a framework by which to. Put together a long-range course, strategic plan.
Well, isn't that not more than just, that you talked about, it's also application and coming up with ideas?
Yeah.
Right, which is probably the biggest.
Yeah.
Component of it.
So, so. I mean, yeah, one part of it is kind of, if everybody can be diligent and review. The information ahead of time, you can kind of see, you can move a lot faster, so you're not reviewing what the mission is. You're not reviewing what our long-range plan that is in place now. Um, the other thing is if Kelly can have a format for the long-range plan and the mission. Cause a lot of that is, um, the format we have now is like twelve items.
Yeah, so it was.
It was a different kind of.
It was and it still is fairly in vogue to do a one-page strategic plan. Um, rather than doing, you know, a traditional, um.
Yeah.
Strategic plan, which is, you know, involves, you know, like serving community members and serving the board and talking to the staff. Then talking to people who don't use the library and why is it that they're not using the library and sort of all of those things. Um, which is certainly something we should, we should talk about when formulating our, our long-range plan. How we, we wish to go about it. So that's all would be part of the retreat to sort of say, alright, this is, this is what we think. Um, this is how we wanna go about it, this type of plan we wanna do. What are, what are the steps to move forward and what is, what is our vision for what we have going?
So, so half of the, half of it is literally setting things up and then the other half is.
Yeah.
Filling in the details and.
Yeah, I mean, I've done, I've done it both ways, right? I've done a traditional one where we've done the, where we've been. Where we are, where we're going, um, and then, you know, over five years, I think five years is. Too much time at this point, just because of how quickly technology moves. Um, you know, you're really looking at a three-year-long stretch. I'm, I'm using long range, but I'm trying to retrain up the thing, the teacher. Um, and then I've also done like a four-page strategic plan. Um, which is more of that, that bullet point style, um, which, you know, they both have their merits. It's just, you know. How you wanna go about doing it, really seeing what it is that the board's vision is for, for the library and moving forward. And where you won't see the library headed, you know, in three years, but also in five, in ten. And then you add the sustainability, you know, portion to the, to the conversation and, you know. We, one of the things that's, that's on my list that just keeps getting lower down, um, because other things pop up. Like the HVAC, um, is, you know, making sure that our library is certified sustainable by the Sustainable Libraries Initiative. So, these are all things freedom.
Okay, outreach and public relations.
Um, we did not meet, but I had submitted. Um, some proposals to Kelly for addition of the, for expanding our website. With the um, fundraising, with the wills, the uh, gifts and other things of that nature. So when we have our IP person.
Yeah.
Uh, in place, we can uh, include items on the, I think we can. I did. But if you'd like it in a different format, I, we'll change it around.
I'll take a look.
However you wanna do it, I'm mental, helping out anyway I can.
Okay, Ash Park.
Park, working at, uh, last Wednesday evening, April twelve, and the month. Things discussed was that, um, the spring is the busiest time of the year for the park because of, um, middle and high school sports. Are using the fields, which are in great shape. They've had some overseeding and, um, overseeding was done in. Thin areas elsewhere in the park. The five K race will take place on September ten. Looking in shape, everybody. It was a great event last year. It was a great success and Park hopes to build on that. And then, um, Bash at Mash, I think I mentioned that last meeting will not occur this year. Because there was not enough lead time to do, uh, gather sponsors and organize the event. So, um, the park is looking. To reconsider that for a different kind of fundraising event the next spring. To reconsider that for a different kind of fundraising event the next spring.
What is it, Bash?
Okay, Bash.
Some music, a bunch of different.
They did it about three, for the fiftieth anniversary of Woodstock, so they had these bands, not, was that fans, bands, um. Play at the park for like the whole eight hours or whatever, and, um, I don't know if they sold tickets or how they, they made money on it. But, um, so the, the, the community member who's interested in bringing the event back. Um. Came up with some suggestions, I, and ideas, but it just, it wasn't enough time to organize it and plus. It, it just got too complicated, so they will think, we think it for next year.
Got a shirt, that's.
Well, keep it, it could be treasure. Yeah, it's, and, um, that's.
That's fun, I have one more.
I had one, yeah, sure, it, it's the plant on the, um, boat in May, do they have anything up on about May? Uh, oh, the school board is, the school has a boat in May.
Okay, the school has, I think, three initiatives on the farm boat. It, it has nothing to do with the park.
None of them.
One is purchase Morrison. One is to fund the Historical Society will change its name.
To the historical museum.
And the funded through the school district, that's the other. Kind of.
Is it, but it's not.
Is it third their budget? No, I feel as if, uh, uh, I don't know, maybe third is just the budget. Um, yeah, so the initial plans to renovate the park.
Yeah.
Is dead in the water for now. To see what happened with that Morrison boat, but the school district will renew its contract with the park again, they're just hammering out. In terms of.
And then they're talking to the town about CPM. Purchase for development rates.
Yes, so that is being worked on. Yeah, that will take some time, and that would be, um, a great opportunity.
Definitely.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, Ed Hawk, one for the books. One for the books, we had our continuing discussion, a lot of it, I think, is going to depend on. The time when we're gonna be doing this and seeing that now, uh, this is gonna be a lot of. Stuff going on here in late August and early September, we might not be able to use the rotunda as a, a site, um. We have been circulating around just doing this in a smaller format, I have a commitment from one family that is willing to give up their home. Uh, and with a possible speaker already, um, so it's just a matter of. Uh, picking a, a time right now, and then we can get families to commit as far as locations. And then getting writers at the same time, and it's, I think we decided it was gonna be just one evening, or is it one weekend?
I had one, just, yeah, I was, I, I thought we'd do it one weekend instead of the two years.
I think we sort of decided like it was back for one night only, and we have five locations with one being the library. But if we went with that last Saturday or Sunday in August, the library would be closed because of the renovation. Which would be okay, because we could be like, hey, we're closed for a renovation, but one for the books is.
Except it's all the books are sitting in the rotunda.
Yes, well, no, we didn't have it here, but, um, the library is closed, but please, we try to go to these people to have them.
Yes, um, um. Yeah, and, uh, I will offer my house, except my nephew is not, is getting married, and he is not decided if it's going to be this fall or next spring. I think it's a little late to choose, to choose fall, but. Um, and they may get married at our house, so.
I have two recommendations. Um, the chef and owner, Reverend Dan Eric Rhyper, who has a home in Sag Harbor, and he's written a memoir, One Fifty-Two Yokes. Uh, he would be a wonderful speaker and somebody could get him. And the other is a children's book author, um, Kate Holliver, who wrote Angelina Ballerina and has a new series, um, Rachel, and she's a friend of mine, and I know she.
Um, yeah, we were, if the library were open, we were hoping to do a children's, a children's one for the book at the library in the morning, and then. A teen one for the books for the library. For the teens in the afternoon, and then have the evening one be the adult one, but that really was dependent on the library being.
And speaking of yolks, it's, it's a chicken and egg type of thing, because we don't know whether we're dependent on who can get as talented, as the authors first. Or we have to, you know, how to get the hosts first.
Yeah.
I think we're not gonna have a problem as far as hosts.
Yeah.
Especially since we're doing it on a smaller, uh, level.
Uh, yeah, we're not looking for twenty.
But we don't. You know, for Kelly's sanity and everybody else's, I don't know that we necessarily want to have it at the time when there's a lot of stuff that's going.
Yeah, I'm, I mean. I was pushing for summer just because more people are around, um, but we could do it in September. And. Or I see the, we, we've hit problems with this before, because September. You've got Harbor Fest, then you've got the Music Festival.
Then you've got the budget vote.
Yeah, so, and you've got the budget vote, so, but now that we're not doing it as fundraiser, we can have it around the budget vote.
We could.
We couldn't have it around the budget vote before, because.
And the other consideration was. If someone wanted to have it, perhaps even outside of our joint.
Right. It's whether.
Too.
Too far into the winter.
Yeah.
Right.
And I think it's also darker, and so that makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
Well, yes.
People don't like loud events, it's scary.
Yeah, um, okay, well, I just want to put those out there, no, I.
There was the suggestion.
No, they're great, and, you know, and we, if we move to the, um. Kind of not when the library's first for the, for the stacks. I think. The author of Angelina Ballerina would be very popular.
It was. It's like a lovely little party.
Yeah.
But you'd be great to have the kids all dressed up, even the adults. I do choose to. I choose it to clear.
Yeah, you know, she did something last year, I think, with the Hampton Ballet. So, right, so there were some girls dressed up as.
Yeah.
Little, um, An- Angelina as well, she did, but, you know, she, she's a great author, she'll always.
No, she's, and she, I remember them. My kid was little.
Yeah.
I can't remember the stories, though, I just remember the title more than anything.
Um, little mask illustrations are just totally adorable.
Yeah.
And she, all she wanted to give us the ballerina.
So Kelly, I think maybe the way to start is, is to look at your calendar, building schedule, renovations, and other things of that nature. And you pick something that you think is workable, and then we can start from there and start arranging some houses and some, uh, you know.
Do you, you want me to tease it in the summer newsletter? Or are we concerned that we won't get this off the ground for this year?
I think we can, because since it's gonna be on a small schedule, a small scale, it's not really for fundraising.
Yeah.
Per se.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that doesn't preclude us from. Asking the people to support the larger, any number of ways that we can. But let's at least get a, a date.
Okay.
First, and then you can at least tell, tell, say, listen, this is when, you know, we'd like your place, and tell the authors, are you available?
Yeah.
That period of time.
So, I will, I, we, we can have a meeting, that's an email, how does that sound?
Sounds good, that's great. Hey, Ed Hawk Scholarship, we had a meeting on the twenty-nine, few weeks ago. And it was a preliminary meeting, we went over kind of the basic guidelines that. We thought about, and we wanted to, Diane won't talk about what we discussed, and then we'd like to get some feedback from everybody here on how to proceed.
Yeah, um, Gloria participated on Zoom for this meeting, I think this, thinking back on the, all of this issue.
Right after, yeah.
So, um. I'll just talk with you about what we discussed as a concept, as a broad concept for this, there is a patron who wants to offer a scholarship, and. This individual is very open parameters, he didn't come in with a very set. Um, wanting to find set of parameters. Um. But we're kind of shaping it so it's make it available to a full-time Sag Harbor resident, holds a library card here. And, um, you're invited to apply for. What we're calling it as a working process right now, progress right now is Pathway to Professional Success Award. We're not calling it a scholarship, because it could be used for not necessarily. You know, in academic training, it could be used for, um.
Trains.
Professional, professional, and so.
Yeah, professional certification.
Is there any reach?
No, well, not yet, there yet, so it, this award would encourage local residents to obtain valuable skills or certification. That they would need for professional success, so it could be somebody of any age, it could be somebody graduating, recent graduate, about to graduate. Or an older person already in the workforce who needs to get that certification. You know, just additional, whatever, to help remove along in life. Um. And applicants wishing to, this is just something that's good to get, to pursue a skilled trade, attended technical school, community college. You know, the other providers, with the intent of pursuing or continuing a vocational or. Technical occupation or acquiring additional credentials or licensing in their area of interest, which will further. Their employment opportunity, opportunities are invited to. By.
This is a go-on-year thing to one.
Um.
Yes.
Yeah, once a year.
Once a year.
And then.
Initially to one person.
To one person, so applicants must provide a proof of residency and a ten in a. Accredited program, whatever it is, it's got to be accredited, it can't be somebody's teaching, you know, living around having.
Not for me.
I'm interested.
Okay.
We're thinking five thousand, but.
Yeah.
Depending on what we come up with.
Yeah.
And then we might go to even two.
I, I think we were sort of feeling like it would be up to five thousand, because perhaps like, uh, if it's, you just need like one class to finish.
Right.
Or whatever the case may be, and it's not a five thousand dollar class, you know, maybe, maybe whatever certification you need is only gonna cost you twenty-five hundred dollars.
And, um, I think. We would award the, have the check made payable to the program provider, not the individual, and then something I thought about after our meeting was. That the amount of the award could be used for up to three consecutive years or, or a period of time, like not just one year, if it might take this person. You know, one, two years to finish whatever this is, that whatever their award is.
The collective, so let's assume the award is five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Person only needs. Thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars.
And they.
Now maybe we get two, can you get two?
Yeah.
Or does it roll over into the next year? I think it will have to depend on who it is, how long the program is, how much money we have, so we have to come up.
Yeah, the donors, sort of, they, the, the caveat that the donor sort of threw out there is that they wanted to make sure that it went. To a person in, um, financial need. Um, but also somebody, to, to make somebody's life better, right, to. Whatever, it, it's the money that's preventing them from continuing their education and furthering their skill set, like, that's. Really what he, he wanted to, to provide a scholarship.
Or how do, how are we be determining? Those, that criteria, because that's a pretty.
First one is really. Kind of intrusive, right?
Well, but, but it's also a hard one to. I mean, yeah, that's a hard one, I mean, but, I, I mean, you can ask for tax returns, I mean, that's kind of.
Well, or somebody could say, you know what, I've been an apprentice to a plumber for three years, and I need to get my license, or let's say there's an, you know, exam or train or not. Maybe that's not a good example, somebody who already has some license, but to move up another step needs.
No, no, I know what, I know what you're, you're talking about, and I completely, it's how to figure out that money is the reason why they're not able to make that next step is.
Well, I, I think the hope was, was that. The scholarship was crafted in such a way that. Um. We could sort of tease that out without being intrusive about it, you know, whether it be the applicant has to write an, an essay, and then sort of. In, in that essay, like, how is this going to, you know, further me, that's when somebody sort of writes like, well, right now, you know, I'm an electrician's assistant. And I have to get this certification, but, you know, it's, it's very expensive.
Well, leave it, then, then leave it up to them, we're not gonna require anything.
Yeah, no, it's, it's sort of like a, um. I want to say. Sort of like, you know, one of those things that, like, when you, you write the scholarship policy, like, financial need may be taken into account in selecting. Um, so it's not.
Well, I think that's an important, that's, that's from what you're telling us the donor.
Yeah.
That's an important consideration, so you can't say it might be.
Yeah.
It will be.
Yeah.
Right, uh, uh, something along those lines, and let that person. They have to more or less leave their case, that's what the whole application process is about. And the broader it is, the more.
Yeah.
And then I'm thinking, if somebody doesn't have good English language skills, are they gonna be intimidated to fill out the patient, I'm just wondering, it could even be done part of by. An interview.
Uh, we could, we can, in terms of, of language skills, we do have staff on, onsite who can translate, so if we can have the application available. In, in Spanish, uh, which is the, um, most predominant language out here.
Right, um, well, the other thing is, if staff. I don't know who would be reading through these. Applications, but as long as they, staff could help people prepare an applicant, as long as they're not one of the ones, as long as the staff.
They're not.
Committee, yeah.
Yeah.
They're not on committee.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, that's what libraries do, is they help people with.
It wouldn't, it would be a, a library staff committee, making that selection, it would, it would be a board committee.
Yeah, then.
Um, and what we would do is we would blind the applicants, so.
Yeah, I don't think we want to go interviews, I think, I think a written submission would be, would be plenty. You have to establish criteria, and one, uh, type of thing, just to make sure that there are no conflicts of interest, are you going to limit it? In some way or preclude people who are maybe.
Related to.
Related to.
So. Right.
Yeah, no, we actually, um, I had shared the, the sample policy from. The scholarship I set up in Bridgehampton, Amy Wall, and all of that is, is in there, you know, like, you can't be. Currently employed by the library, you can't be related to a trustee of the library, you can't be related to a current staff member of the library.
Yeah.
And the way we blinded it in Bridgehampton is, one of the criteria is you had to be a Sag Harbor, or in Bridgehampton, a Bridgehampton library card holder. Um, because that proves residency, because you have to prove you're a resident of the district, you have a library card, um, and then it also gives me, um. A unique number to put at. The top of each page when we remove any personal information, so the only person would, who, who would know. Who these individuals applying are, would be me, and I'm not helping.
But I'm so glad you've memorized everybody's library card number.
I haven't, I'm going to look.
So we're gonna have a meeting next week, Diane and I talked about it, so we'll get with you to schedule a meeting, and then we'll have a lot more next.
Yeah.
Next four, Wednesday kickoff date. Uh, we're, we're, we're definitely, uh, have the first scholar given out next spring.
Yeah.
So we have plenty of these time, but.
We do.
Back here at Quirbo. And I think we want to get in touch with the donor too.
Yeah.
After we have our meeting. Is it too late to do? This year?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, if, if you're for college, yes, or trade school, no. I mean, you could do, you could do something.
To before then.
Yeah, no, I, I would wait, I would wait, but.
I think when we last spoke to the donor, we did tell him that we were aiming for a twenty twenty-four scholarship.
He was ready to go for this spring, but it was only in February.
You know, we, we have to pull together the policy, it has to be approved, we need to advertise it properly, you know, it could be something. Because there's still details to iron out, and, um, I would just dare say, I'm only one person. And we're doing a renovation and bringing back. And we're doing a renovation and bringing back one for the. Wow, 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 um, and I'm, I'm only one person.
Okay, speaking of one person, whole business.
Hello darkness, my old friend, the. So Patrick is hoping by the end of the week to get to me, um, plans, he says. I'm just waiting on a few sub consultants, um, acoustics analysis for the acoustic architectural barrier and structural design. Once I have those together, I will compile and send it over to you, so.
And Patrick is from where?
Patrick is from Lizardos. The engineering, so we are, we are waiting on. Acoustic specialists, um. And then in terms of discussing the flooring and the stack replacement, Dan did an excellent job of giving you a nice primer. Uh, what we have is.
Not primer in color, that's blue. Chicory blue.
And Catalina.
Uh, and what you have in here is an updated, this is the actual cost, um, of. The thing, as I mentioned, it's about fourteen thousand dollars more, we saved some money in several places, but we also spent some money in other places. Um, one of which was to do the matching wood, we have matching wood, we have. Millwork, which we are keeping on the main and second floors, which we have to match. Um, if we want to do this right and make it. So there is a cost associated with that. Um, and actually with her, she gets, I'm giving out the gold star for buildings and grounds to Anne. And I'll just let her speak, because she went over the proposal with three highlighters.
I compared this proposal to the one we've gotten last month. To figure out why we were fourteen thousand over, because I thought honestly we were going to be more. Because the, um, matching the color was fifteen thousand. But Kelly and I, um, at, at the end of the building, it's a ground meeting, um, had an epiphany. And we talked, and that was that the end caps on the, um, stacks. Right now you can display books, and so we thought that it would be important to replace the flat ones that we had ordered. With ones that you could display books again.
Did this after the chair, those.
Yeah, that's because you ran out of, ran out, because you were complaining about blue. And all of them will be a lovely shade of. But that addition was twenty thousand, so we actually. Between the two, um. Between the two quotes, we added thirty five thousand dollars in cost, and the fact that we only went up fourteen was because. Our selections saved us money everywhere we could, so we selected, we, we picked well. But when he said, well, you could do this for an extra cost, we said, no, no, we'll just look, look at, show us what you've got and we'll fit macro.
Can I ask a question? So my understanding from CLC is because it's New York State, they're going to have to break this down again by vendors, so they haven't done that yet?
They have not, we need to. Give this the big old thumbs up tonight, and then they will break this down by vendor, because all of this is off the New York State contract, which. As an association library, we don't have to select things off the New York State contract, but. We can get New York State contract pricing for these items, and that's generally a better price than if you went to the store and bought.
Is that gonna change the bottom?
It is not, it's just how they have to submit it in order to get that pricing, requires them to do paperwork, but it was easier and cleaner. For them to give us one proposal of everything here, and then let that New York State contract scary looking. Um, documents be the one that they, they send. Yes. Is there a warranty?
Warranty on these?
Uh, it's whatever, it's whatever the standard warranty is for, for the.
That would be in these small.
Manufacturer warranty applies to all furniture and shelving, installing services are warranted by the seller to be free from defects. In materials and workmanship for a period of twelve months from the date of delivery, unless otherwise specified.
So I have one other question. So the proposal for the book move in the furniture shelving disposal.
I just got that, like.
That's an addition.
Are we gonna consider those two separate entities, or are we, does that get folded into the proposal for the?
We can, we can do either or, I think we take. This proposal, which includes the extra fourteen thousand for the, um, the other stuff. Um, and approve that, and then that I can. Get a, a quote for alternate people to, to move the books and tear up the stuff. But I don't think that that is a over the top.
And it's also not practical to have more people in the building.
And they already know what our timeline is, I can, I can call the book movers that come out of Long Island City, but I don't know if they.
I don't think we need to do that, I think that they're pretty reasonable, I just didn't know if they, if they were, if they were like two different departments or something like, you know, they had the book move guys.
I, I would keep these two things separate, so I would consider book moving, and I, I would consider both purple to separate thing.
Do we have a proposal?
For the, I guess, I got it at.
No, 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 there are motions.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the furniture product, but. The proposal from CLC Library for the renovation of the furniture and the, and the stacks.
I would second that, my hope be.
Yes, all in favor? Post.
Then I make a proposal, make a proposal that we use CLC for the book move in the furniture shelving disposal.
I'll make a motion.
Because they really are quite.
Don't ask me what goes to what, but these are all the colors. This is the shelving downstairs.
This is the next.
Should I go the other way since you're writing?
Thank you.
Um, okay.
On to new business.
New business, so we have a couple of policies, we just want to, uh, tighten up here, one came at the. Yeah, my policy is. What is our family leave policy? One of the things that is missing from our family leave policy, uh, with. Was the boilerplate policy from New York State, thank New York. Um, was that we did not include in our policy what we do with individuals. Who are currently, um, making other, other contributions through their paycheck. So when somebody goes on New York State family leave, the library doesn't pay them, they are paid through Guardian. And so if they're paid through Guardian, things like if they wanted to still contribute to their retirement. Or they have AFLAC as, um, a additional insurance. Um, there's, there's no function by which to pay them, because you're getting paid ultimately by the state. So we were asked to put in a couple of sentences into this policy. Um, basically, if you are currently enrolled in AFLAC and wish to continue this coverage, you must continue to pay your biweekly cost. Premium cost while on leave, and the other one is employees are paid by the library's insurance carrier, therefore the library does not contribute to your four or three B retirement plan during your leave. You may continue to contribute to your retirement plan, if you wish to do so, please speak with the benefits administrator to set up a payment plan to ensure continuation of the. The benefits administrator, um, being Wanda. I mean, they could come talk to me, but I'm just gonna be like.
And this would be in the employee handbook?
And this would be in the employee handbook and an update to our paid family leave policy. Um, the, the second, do you wanna just do the second policy real quick too?
Let's just do one at a time.
One at a time.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion. Moments with other libraries or association libraries.
And at, at the recommendation of our auditor.
Okay, can we have a motion? Be mentioned to the family leave policy, so move. I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right, I have a question about the second one.
The holiday, sure.
So, basically it says, if you work on a day as a holiday, you get paid for it, right?
That's what we want to.
Right, so. If you work, let's say Christmas is on a Sunday, and you don't normally work Sundays, I mean, like the major.
If you are a full-time employee, you get a comp day for that, this is just part-time employee. Okay, so it's my understanding, right before Kathy retired, we, we, the, I'm part of that we now, so we'll just. Use the royal way, um. Passed a policy which said, beginning January first, part-time staff working a regular schedule of twenty one hours per week. Or more, you'll receive prorated holiday time in addition to the current, or prorated, so blah, 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 blah. So if you work twenty one hours a week, you are technically three fifths full-time, so you receive three fifths of a seven-hour workday. Um, it's a nightmare, it is a nightmare to try to enforce, and it helps no one. Um, so what I believe was the reason for, for this policy being created. We give health benefits if you work twenty eight hours a week. And so what was happening was when we were off, for just as an example, you know, like. Christmas Eve, we're close Christmas Eve, right, Christmas Eve and Christmas. Almost full-time employees, in order to retain their health benefits, had to burn vacation days. Because we, or whatever, um, paid, paid, you know, PTO of some sort, a personal day, a vacation day. Um, in order to maintain their twenty eight hours in a week. For them to, to continue health insurance. And so a policy was created so that if one of these employees basically like worked on a Monday. There's a ton of Monday holidays, which meant that all of their vacation time. Had to go towards holiday pay and they could not take a vacation, does that make sense, that makes sense? Um, and so the policy was created to create like prorated holiday time. But here's the thing, when we budget for staff salaries, we budget them as working fifty two weeks a year. So we, if we're closed, that's not their fault, it's, it's our fault, we're closed for a holiday. So what I am recommending and what the large majority, um, of libraries do. Is if you are a part-time employee eligible to receive holiday pay for holidays, which you would normally be scheduled to work. You are paid for those hours, so if somebody like works on a Sunday. They get paid, and Christmas falls on a Sunday, they get paid for that, if somebody is part-time and they never work on a Monday. Um, you know, they're not gonna get a holiday, um, so what, basically what was happening is. This policy was only helping one employee who, um, never worked on a Monday. But because of how the policy was written, we were just paying her some extra hours to work on a Monday. Um, which doesn't make any sense, so the, the more equitable and easier to, um. Regulate and enforce is if the library is closed. We give you your regular hours on that day, and the other part that makes that easier is for some employees. This is where it gets, gets like real dicey, right, like if you work a longer day or a shorter day. Now we're trying to catch up hours, like during the week, if we are calling a day, a seven-hour day. That means somebody like Wanda who works on a Sunday, um, we have to like find an hour somewhere else on the week, right? Or somebody who works a long day on a Monday, and there are a couple of staff members who do. And part-time staff members who look, work longer days because we're open, um, nine to six, like if they're taking that day off. It's they, then they owe us enough work, right, so it becomes this terrible, horrible thing, so let's just. Pay people one more clothes, long story short.
And this was, this was what we were trying to get to, but.
Yes, here we are, pay people one more clothes, yeah, please.
Okay, can we get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Post. Motion passes. Okay, period for public expression.
Thank you for kissing that policy.
Is that really available now?
It, it was. Was settled for a nine to five day, they would get paid for three, a portion of that day instead, they gave for the full day.
So this is good, staff is much happier.
Uh, they don't know about it, uh, but they will be happy when they find out or not, um. When I tell every single, like it was every single holiday, Wanda and I spent hours, hours, right? Trying to figure it out.
Anything that we can do, make it better here.
So it's, it's, it's easy and it's equitable, and those are my two favorite.
That's really important to them in their job.
It's gonna help retain, you know, the quality of ways to draw people here, you know that we have their backs, it's, it's all good.
Okay, it's seven thirty eight, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I motioned that we adjourn, thanks.
That's always gonna be your motion.
All in favor? Post.